I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held April 16th, 2013 at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Ilinski?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
And Councilmember Howard E. is absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Sandra Jacobs with us tonight to lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
(Inaudible) reminder that the Nicholson Marathon (inaudible) scheduled for this Saturday. And based on events at the Boston Marathon, we will be taking additional security measures to make sure there are no problems. But we, it looks like we hope to have somewhere around 600, 700 people participating, so should be a very successful event. Just to invite the council on April 26th, I think the staff is planning a disc golf outing in case any of the council members want to join after work on the 26th. Also, over the weekend and some of last week, there was a report about a USGS model presentation about the Verdi River that was held by the Verdi River Basin Partnership. We are going to have Tom Whitmer prepare and do a presentation to our city council at one of our soon-to-be upcoming meetings, probably our first meeting in May, just to kind of give the council the story about that model, the rest of the story as far as the Verdi River and our water supply, because there is some misinformation being used related to that, and I think it's important that we address that. And last but not least, tomorrow at, I believe it's 12 o'clock, Mayor, help me out with this, we have an Arizona Town Hall meeting at the Recreation Center, and it'll be about a recent statewide town hall they had related to civic leadership. And Mayor will be there, I'll be one of the presenters, and Casey Rooney as well, so if you get a chance to come out. Is it 12? I'm going to say it's 12 o'clock.
I'm thinking, let me look at my calendar.
(Inaudible).
It's, okay, hang on just a second.
11:30.
11:30 to 1.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mayor. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And if any council members want to attend it, I think you could still get registered if you're interested. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I'd like to remind the community that on May 4th, you should plan ahead for this, that you have a Pike College Vida Culture and Analogy Program will again be having a vine planting that's open to the community in groups to come up and help with that new program with the college. Last year, I know the city had a team that went up there and planted, and I think we beat the other cities with our numbers.
So, are we, do we have a plan for that this year?
Not yet, but we will be advertising that.
Okay. Because last, as Terrence said, last year our staff really showed their colors of...
Be back.
Their wine colors.
Again, that's May 4th, and anyone in the community can come up and plant some vines.
And I think it's three acres this year as opposed to, was it one acre?
We did three last year.
Three last year.
And we're going to do another three this year, and it's a really growing program, and it supports a local industry that really helps the whole Verdi Valley.
Counsel?
I do have.
Yes, Mr. Ilinski.
At last night's planning and zoning meeting, Historic Preservation Commissioners Left, Farley and myself attended the meeting to be present for the planning and zoning commission to review our historic preservation ordinance, and they approved it, so it should hopefully shortly be kicked up to council for us to look it over. And then at our last Historic Preservation Commission meeting last week, Wednesday, we had two members of the public there, first time ever. It was Evelyn, who used to be on the senior commissioner's name, last name I can't pronounce.
Right here.
Yes, thank you. And her friend Karen were there, and they expressed concern about the Civic Center, really wanted to see that get restored and put to use. So I told them that it was our...
One of our strategic initiatives.
Yeah, it's one of our initiatives, and also we're starting our budget planning, so if they wanted to come to the council meeting, call the public, they're welcome to, but I did tell them too that I would express their concerns with the council.
Thank you. Anything else, council members? Let's see. We had a ribbon cutting at Orion Bread, and Vice Mayor was there, and Councilmember Norman was there. And I don't, how did we advertise that? Because I had a merchant tell me they didn't know about it.
Newspaper?
Newspaper, and did we send a notice to all the Old Town merchants?
(Inaudible).
Okay. Okay. Anyway, it was a wonderful event, and we had some, we had a couple, three merchants there. And so now you can park in the Orion Bread, well, I guess it doesn't have a name, it's the nameless parking lot at this point, but we call it Behind the Orion Bread Company. So it's just a beautiful project, and how many spaces are there, Doug?
Where's Dan?
Dan's, 27 extra spaces now to park in, and it's just very, very well done, so we appreciate that, and I'm sure that people who want to come to Old Town for any reason appreciate that also. Mayor? Yes.
And they need to remember that that arm at the end of the driveway, it doesn't go up immediately, so sit there a second and let that go up, and don't back down the alley thinking it's not going to. But it does, it works wonderful, it's really nice.
It might be important to explain to the public that you access it either by Cactus or Main Street, but if you're accessing from Main Street, it's a one-way lane with a beautiful walking sidewalk now with wrought iron, is it wrought iron? It's very attractive.
(Inaudible).
And so you can only go one way to get into it from Main Street, and there's a little arm there, don't let that scare you, it will raise and allow you to access the parking lot. It's a little bit confusing for folks at this time, but all figured out, it's sort of like roundabouts, right? You eventually figure it out. Okay, anything else? Let's see, we also, the Compassion, I wanted to let everyone know that the Compassionate Friends, which is an organization that assists people who have lost children, Barb Pratt's is, and Sheila Latham are going to kind of revive it, and everybody else that was previously on the board is working with them, but it kind of had a hiatus for a while because it just needed more people, as organizations do. But they're going to be having a balloon event where you let balloons go off into the sky with your child's name and a message for your child in there, and that is going to be May, and just a second, let me get there, May 2nd, I believe. May 4th, excuse me, May 4th from 11 to 2:00, it's going to be in the Oak Creek Valley Park, which is Oak Creek Valley out here between here and Sedona. And anybody that would like to attend can give me a call, because right now I can't think of Barb's phone number. But anyway, just to let people know that that's coming up to help people in that situation. And then, as council knows, we've had, since our summit on the teen center back in January, we've been having continual meetings every month, and we're really looking for a place to meet. It's just, we're thinking of the fire station, but that, it turned out after staff examined it to be very expensive, so we're just still looking at a place. If any council members have any ideas to help us out, please let Mary Ann know what those ideas might be. Okay, so that's my report. Moving on to the next item, this call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Per ARS 3843102H, comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? If not, I'll close the floor to the public, and we'll move on to the next item. Introduction of New Employees: Sandra Jacobs, Administrative Assistant for City Hall. And we have Kyla Allen to introduce her tonight.
Absolutely. Everybody who's in the city knows that we recently lost Renee George, she is moving to Indiana, it's a new adventure for her. And she made sure we got a wonderful new assistant, this is Sandra Jacobs. She's been working at the middle school for 10 years, the majority of that's been in the attendance office, and we're just peachy glad to have her, she is so good at what she's doing, I'm just really thrilled with her.
That's great. Any comments, Sandra? You've been on the job, what, a month now?
A month now, and I have to say, I really enjoy it, everyone's just been magnificent to me, and I'm having lots of fun, so I really appreciate the opportunity.
Great.
You're welcome.
And maybe if we could get a photo of you two for our Facebook page, and maybe the city manager could take the photo, or I can, whichever works best, so that people who are coming to the city will be able to see who they'll be meeting.
Sandra's experience in dealing with kids has worked out very well in terms of... (Laughter). And I did deal with some of the staff members. They're also fortunate in that Sandra is bilingual and speaks Spanish.
Take a couple, somebody will have one eye closed.
(Inaudible).
All right, thank you. You're welcome. Welcome to our city. We know that you will give the citizens of Cottonwood great service. Okay, the next item is approval of minutes, the regular minutes, the regular meetings of March 19th and April 2nd, 2013. Any discussion on this item? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I have moved to approve the regular meetings of March 19th and April 2nd, 2013.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Pratt made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item number eight, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is approval of the submission of a Yavapai County Community Foundation K-9 law enforcement grant. Does anyone on the city council wish to remove this item for discussion? Does any member of the public wish to remove this item for discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay. Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, Councilmember Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is approval of a quick claim deed with Mingus Union High School, District Number Four, for a city easement located on property owned by the district. Mr. Luter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mingus Union High School owns a parcel of land, accessory parcel number 40612001A, which had previously been in the county prior to being annexed into the city. The property at the bottom end has what's referred to as an orphaned easement. It appears from our researches, it was originally planned to be some type of roadway access, but subsequent building across other portions of this easement have made it unusable for that. The Mingus Union High School sent a letter requesting the city abandon this easement. Upon talking with the city attorney, and based on his recommendation, instead of abandoning the easement because there's an uncertain nature of how we came to acquire this easement, he's recommending a quick claim deed, which will serve the same purpose for the high school. Staff has researched this and recommends council approve the quick claim deed.
Okay. It's pretty explanatory in the packet. And by the way, for members of the audience or our home citizens, you can get the same information that we have in our packet on www.cottonwoodaz.gov. So any questions for Mr. Luter on this item? Any comments from the public? I would entertain a motion. (Inaudible).
I move to approve the quick claim deed for the portion of unused easement on MUHS property.
Second.
Who is first seconding it? Okay. Councilmember Norman made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Arizona Department of Transportation for inspection of bridges located within the city limits. Mr. Luter?
And committed, Mayor. Federal regulations require the city and other cities throughout the country to do inspections on bridges or within the city's jurisdiction. The Arizona Department of Transportation approached us, and they've been providing with some federal funding that would allow them to inspect the bridges at no cost to the city, which is a great advantage because we really don't have the expertise on staff to do bridge inspections. So staff is recommending that the council approve these IGA joint powers agreement. The city's responsibilities basically are simple, we would waive any right-of-way permit fees, we would give them any information we had on the bridges, provide traffic control during the inspections, make necessary repairs to the bridges, and basically for the city, I believe Councilmember Pratt and staff have kind of the same idea on this one.
This is a no-brainer.
City attorney has reviewed the IGA and has approved its contents, so staff recommends council authorize this IGA JPA with ADOT.
It seemed like the contract looked at everything possible. Yes, Mr. Ilinski?
I have a question about the bridge that is on North Willard. Are you familiar with the one? It's, it's an old bridge, I don't know if that's on private property or if that's...
It is on private property.
It is, okay.
It's not really, it's not, to my understanding, it doesn't follow under the federal guidelines for us to inspect it.
Okay. I would just hate for us to have to repair that bridge.
We've, we're still trying to trace the paperwork on that one.
Okay.
You said North 10th Street?
No, it's North Willard, it's a unique area of town, very old section of town behind Nancy Burnett's, that dirt road that goes back there.
It's an interesting concept, a right turn onto a bridge.
Isn't, and that's the one that goes over the ditch?
Yeah, that's right.
I think we have done some...
We've done some minor...
Improvements to it.
...repairs to it, but that doesn't fall under the jurisdiction of this agreement.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Pratt?
And I will repeat, I think it's a no-brainer that we ought to accept an agreement that would allow us to pay no cost to have experts inspect our bridges.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? If not, Mr. Pratt, you were ready to make a motion?
I move to approve the IGA JPA with ADOT for bridge inspections throughout the city of Cottonwood.
I'll second it. I'll second.
What is that noise?
Oh, sorry.
Oh. That's an interesting buzz. So the next item is...
We need to vote on it.
Okay. So Mr. Pratt made the motion, who seconded it?
I seconded.
Jesse seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
See, a little buzz like that just gets the mayor off of her schedule. Okay, where are we?
Number four.
Okay, so the next item is three requests from the town of Camp Verde for funding assistance for a lobbyist to encourage the Arizona Department of Transportation Board to include the construction of SR 260 from Thousand Trails to I-17 and its five-year transportation facilities construction program. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, council members, as you're aware, there has been continuing efforts to try and get Highway 260 back on the ADOT five-year capital plan, and just recently a stepped-up effort to try and get funding. The funding to complete the project with four lanes, two lanes each way between Cottonwood and I-17 is estimated to be about $40 million. As you're probably aware through various reports that you've received, and maybe even following the media, is the availability of capital funding for roadway projects is extremely limited at the state level. And so consequently, it's going to be important that there's a lot of lobbying efforts to try and get the funding designated for this particular project. Camp Verde has kind of, has really taken the leadership role to try and get this project going again, has been meeting with the various stakeholders, feels comfortable that we can reach consensus on the design of the improvements, and they have brought a consultant onboard to help with that process of both meeting with the stakeholders, and now they have signed a separate contract to have this company also lobby ADOT and the decision-makers to make sure that this project gets on the five-year project list and gets funded. They're going to be very focused on the next ADOT board meetings coming up, both in May and in June, and the terms of the agreement indicate that there's a $10,000 fee upfront, which at this point would be shared between Cottonwood and Camp Verde, although Camp Verde hopes to bring additional stakeholders on, such as not only the private property owners along 260 that stand to benefit from this, but also potentially the town of Clarkdale and also the county in Sedona as well. But at this point, our commitment, or the council's commitment would be $5,000 upfront. If the lobbyist is successful in getting the project on the capital list and getting it funded, there's an additional $20,000 that again would be shared between the stakeholders. But if it was just Camp Verde and Cottonwood, our ultimate exposure, our maximum exposure would be $10,000. So a total of $15,000 if the lobbyist is successful. Again, Camp Verde hopes to bring on additional stakeholders to share in the cost of the lobbyist, and the, again, the council's initial approval would be for the $5,000 upfront, which again may be reduced depending on the number of stakeholders who participate. And then staff would come back to you probably in June, based on what the consultant's results are at that point, and what additional participation we have from other stakeholders in terms of financial support, and potentially ask for additional funding at that point. And I have the town manager from Camp Verde here to also answer any specific questions that the council may have related to the consultant or any other issues related to Highway 260.
So we would give you an opportunity, Mr. Martin, if you want to, do you want to add anything to that at all? I guess my question might be, it's been a few days since this report was written, so have you heard from any of the other partners yet?
Well, and that's what I talked to Doug earlier, I just wanted to make sure, the other partners are always, in this conversation, relying on the two of us, frankly. If we're doing well, then they see that as a positive step forward, so the idea was to get through tonight, and at that point, we can kind of team up on the other entities. I have with me Mr. Steve Ayers, who I recently hired as our Economic Development Director, and councilwoman Jessie Jones, who went through the same kind of thought process that you did. The question, much the same from our council, is, okay, so when can we expect others to jump onboard with us? And frankly, we don't know that yet. Steve has been in contact, frankly, even with the property owners, we believe they have some obligation, and frankly, more of the obligation if we were successful, maybe than the upfront responsibility. We haven't been successful at nailing them down to an amount, but we're hoping that they participate to some level there, approaching the other communities in the valley and suggesting that if they had the opportunity to commit some to that, that would be helpful and would also demonstrate that kind of commitment to what we're trying to accomplish. That's my charge from my council, I would assume yours would be much the same.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, my question was, who are the other stakeholders? So I assume we're talking about Clarkdale, perhaps Jerome?
Correct. And Sedona as well.
Property owners, Sedona as well.
You have a Pike County?
Yavapai County. You know, we were fortunate enough to have our new supervisor representative, Tom Thurman, there. They're very interested in frankly, and honestly, from the beginning of this conversation, it's been my intent to try to get it into the hands of the county in a certain way, because I think they have frankly resources that we do not have to be able to take this to the next level, and frankly, we're one of the better partners when the last project went through, and so it's only because that we're working together that now the county is also willing to be there. He did not commit financially, but Mr. Thurman suggested that that would be an opportunity we'd have as this thing moves forward. And obviously, if this step could move forward, there's many more steps in the process to funding that they could become a player on, but we haven't approached that directly. Again, from this point, if we were successful in bringing you onboard with us, at that point, we're working together, and that sends frankly a very strong message to the rest of the valley, the owners and the county.
So you want to explain for the public's benefit a little bit about, is there $6,000 or $7,000 in this fund that they've kept into the five-year plan in the past five years?
Yeah.
And we, but we need more because that's only going to do a little piece of that road.
Correct. There's currently $7 million in that fund to be able to do some design work, and then ultimately some level of construction. And at minimum, essentially, according to the district engineer, to be able to design, hopefully, the whole stretch, and then at least make some stretch, maybe short of a mile out of it. Where that mile gets done, where it's the best possible location, frankly, that's going to probably be up to you to do that. So at minimum, that's what we're looking at, or at least it was in there and hope it remains in there. And there, we're all fairly confident that will remain the case regardless of what scenario, and I don't know how much information you know about the three scenarios that the ADOT commission is really looking at, but ultimately, what we're looking at is to push that from 7 million to 40, which would allow basically from Thousand Trails all the way to 17 to be a four-lane, have the intersections, those things that need to be in there, and the discussions continue, make sure that design reflects that, maybe not necessarily construction, reflects that corridor and what needs to go there so we can all agree. corridor and what needs to go there so we can all agree. Again, where we are now, I could have only dreamed of about six months ago, well, even about a year ago when I brought it to the city managers in our regular conversations and said, but ADOT is, at least the district engineer, Alvin Stumpf, has taken a group. He has met. You have your representatives and others have been there as well. They had their first meeting. They're going to meet again, I think, May 20-something, and talk a little bit more about the issues related to access and all the design issues related there, obviously, you know, bike paths, all sorts of fun stuff that really frankly in this day and age need to be done in a transportation corridor. So they're going through that process now led by the district engineer, which I think is a very progressive statement on the part of ADOT that they are willing to jump into this and make that next step. So that's progressing and will continue to progress ultimately. The idea is that they would like to have an IGA with all of us sign on that says this is where we're headed, this is the design. And fundamentally, what we're talking about now is, are the resources there to be able to go ahead and construct? To what level? Well, we're all, actually, the purpose of this tonight is to fund it at a full level because do it once, do it right, get it done, and not have a continual three- or five-year construction cycle to make this improvement or that improvement. And that's why we felt, even in tight times, we have a very good, strong argument that this could be done. And 40 million is no small amount, but in relation to the things that are going on and the needs of the state and the type of opportunity and the benefit to the residents here, the 70 or so thousand plus all our visitors, et cetera, this is a critical opportunity and should be seen as one opportunity to get it done, do it efficiently, and get it done in this time. So we're trying to push that at this time.
So like Sedona, I mean, they talk about having 4 million visitors a year, so I can see why they might be invited to belong to the ideas. If you can get some of that traffic through there, that would benefit them too. Otherwise, you'd wonder, well, why are you asking, you know, them?
Yeah, and they're seated at the table as well.
But it would benefit everyone in the Verde to have this. Terrence?
And it would benefit us especially economically and safety-wise. It would make that road much safer for people to travel.
Yeah, and to add on to that, I want to make sure you're all aware, I mean, tomorrow afternoon, we're going to meet, I think, at the county office and talk with the communities again and try to get our heads together with this particular consultant. They're going to give us some level of, here's the game plan to make sure that we're all on the same page, we're singing the same song sheet that we're all there. So, and I invited whoever possibly could attend, so we got some representation. Sedona, we heard they could not make it because they got a budget hearing. We're all in those same boats, I think, but they had one scheduled, so they're not going to be there. But we're going to sit down and try to strategize moving forward. And frankly, whatever decision is made by any of those entities, we're not asking just because they don't have skin in the game not to come. If they can support it in some other fashion, then game on. Everybody is good. May 10th is a critical. It's up in Flagstaff, if you recall. Some of this started, we had a Camp Verde opportunity in September. The next meeting, I think, is Friday in Tucson. The next real opportunity for all of us to really make a statement there in the Verde Valley is that May 10th, and we'll get some information and we pass that along. That's what that meeting is tomorrow afternoon, to try to strategize and make sure we do that. And frankly, as important is the residents. You know, we can speak with one mind and one voice, but it really is, it has a lot of bearing, as he's suggesting. When you have just regular residents showing up saying how important it is from their safety, their commute, their whatever it is, having that is gold to this conversation at the commission level. So any part of that you can play to encourage folks to attend and give us some positive feedback as to the need of it is going to be helpful.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, the other one I think is, you know, you strike when the iron is hot. I would think we'd have a lot of leverage today considering the amount of press we're getting in Phoenix, the Verde Valley. It's becoming, not just Sedona anymore, it's the whole Verde Valley has become a destination for people.
Yes, we like to think that, right.
So we could play that card too, and that's pretty strong.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bartosz?
And I think it is important that the council understand that we are kind of moving along on parallel paths here. We're still working on the design, making sure that, you know, that there's some agreement on that, that we get that to the councils, get their buy-in on it. Yet at the same time, we want to move to make sure that we get this listed on the five-year capital plan and that we get the funding as opposed to, you know, waiting until the design is kind of all agreed upon. But I think basically, we have agreement that this is important, we've got to get it done. Obviously, Cottonwood is interested in the fewer stops as possible, but recognizing that ADOT also has a standard in terms of what they use.
Questions, council?
No.
So I guess my last thought is, I mean, we're talking maybe $40,000 and ADOT is just in a world of hurt. But I guess that's the purpose of this plan, trying to, our lobbyists, or your lobbyists, not ours, but trying to find maybe these little pots of money that...
We're hoping all of our lobbyists, frankly.
That could come our way. But I think that because of our citizens, I mean, our 11,800 citizens just in the city limits really count on that road and that, and I think that its safety is paramount. And it feels so good to be working and collaborating with you, you know, all, I mean, still the design is a concern for everyone. But I think we're more in a position and of a mind right now to collaborate and cooperate and get that road finished. It should have been finished 10 years ago.
Right.
So I don't know what the rest of the council thinks. I would entertain hearing your opinions. Mr. Ilinski?
I think it's money well spent. It is hard to shell that kind of money out for something that's still in the planning phase, but it's money that's going to benefit all of our communities greatly in the future. Now's the time to spend it and move forward.
Mr. Pratt?
And you know, ADOT did back away at one point because they felt like we weren't working together. Again, now they say that we recognize that, which we've always recognized, we're all one community really. We share the same neighborhood and it would benefit all of us.
Vice Mayor?
And with the important meetings coming up with ADOT that you just mentioned, I think it's a good time also for us to jump in and join Camp Verde on this with the agreement.
Okay, so as I understand it, $5,000 if the council does approve this would come out of our contingency right now.
That's correct, Mayor.
And then the next $10,000, if this happens before July 1st, that would be a new budget year. Would we budget it then?
No, it would still be in the same, this budget year because it would be before July 1st according to the agreement.
Okay, so it'll be before July 1st and it'll come out of, so we'll have to find someplace to find the $10,000?
Have to check Rudy's pockets and find out where he's hiding some stuff.
So we would, we have 6,800 or 900, something I read in there?
92.
Left after this so that we could donate that toward it if we don't have another contingency item come up?
Right.
Or we'll look at other accounts.
And certainly, we can find the money if that's the council's desire at that time as well.
And if we go into it...
And again, hopefully, it's much less than that based on other stakeholders participating.
The way I put it, my council, I hope we have that problem.
Yeah. Right. Mr. Dowling?
I'll just say that a couple of items, I think that we have more in common and agree on more than we would differ on, you know, so that's always a good reason we've had together. And that, you know, what is the next person who loses their life worth on that road?
Right.
You know, put a number on that, it's not really, not really possible. So I think we've got to do whatever we can to make it the safest it can be.
I agree. Are there any members of the public? Councilmember Norman?
Well, I think we all have learned a lot of lessons from the last go-round. I attended a lot of those meetings with ADOT last time, and everybody had their idea of what it should be and couldn't agree. And I think we've all learned that we have to work together, and I can see that it's going to work. And I think ADOT will see that too.
They have so far. That's a good thing.
Good point. Mr. Pratt?
Is there time for a motion?
It is.
I move to approve an initial funding amount, not to exceed $5,000, to support the town of Camp Verde consultant's agreement to lobby for funding and completion of the improvements to Highway 260.
Second.
Councilmember Pratt made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'd just like to thank you for making the trip over and helping us with information.
Drive safely.
You're welcome. Okay, the next item is Resolution Number 2694, Appointing an Associate Magistrate for the city's municipal court. The Honorable Judge Lasota is here to present this item.
Evening, Mayor Jones. Councilmembers, A Douglas Lasota, Presiding Magistrate of the City Council Municipal Court. At this point in time, Mary Hamm has previously served us for two years up until now and has done a good job. She's also, works on our cases on weekends as part of the, she's one of the county judges that cover everybody's cases on weekends too. She's done a fine job for us, so we'd ask for reappointment of her at this time for another two-year term.
Okay. Any discussion, council members? Sounds like she's done a very good job. Is very qualified according to the information in the packet, and the judge approves of her, so that says a lot about her qualifications. Any comments from the public? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Dowling?
Let's see here. I make a motion to reappoint Honorable Mary E. Hamm as an Associate Magistrate at the standard rate of $50 per hour.
Second.
It's a resolution.
Sorry, yeah. That should have been, the motion should be the adoption of Resolution 2694, appointing Judge Hamm.
Okay. I move to adopt the resolution of 26, Resolution 2694, to reappoint the Honorable Mary E. Hamm as an Associate Magistrate at the standard rate of $50 per hour.
Okay, second. Hey, Councilmember Dowling made the motion, Councilmember, Councilmember, the Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2694 by title only.
Resolution Number 2694, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Mary E. Hamm as an Associate City Magistrate and establishing a term of office. Madam Mayor?
That's it? Okay, so the next items are five and six, which are to review the performance of the city's full-time magistrate, and I would ask that we go ahead and approve the claims and adjustments prior to that. And that's item number 10. Any discussion on that?
Second.
Let's see here. I believe I need to, I need to step down.
Okay, so if the record would please show that Councilmember Dowling has declared a conflict? Any other questions or discussions? I'd entertain a motion.
I thought you made a motion.
You made it. He seconded.
You made a motion and I seconded it.
I did?
Yes.
I said, did I really make, I don't think I really did. It might have sounded that way.
You said, "I moved."
It wasn't my intention, so if you would go ahead and...
I move to accept the claims and adjustment.
I'll second.
Okay, so Councilmember Pratt actually made the real motion, and Councilmember Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Claims and adjustments are to be paid. Okay, so the next item is review of the performance of the city's full-time magistrate, A Douglas Lasota pursuant to ARS 3443103A1. Counsel may vote to convene into executive session for discussion. And the judge did receive a notice and said that, let's see, he's agreed to waive his right to a 24 advance written notice of the council's scheduled anticipated executive session to discuss his performance as the city's presiding magistrate and possible renewal terms of employment. And this written communication also confirms that he has not and does not intend to exercise his right to compel the council to hold this discussion in open public session, and he understands that the council may elect to have a part of the discussion without him president, present, after which time we will invite him to join if the council decides to hold an executive session on either item. So the judge has already stated that he accepted those conditions. And so I would like to, apparently, do we have some members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Are any members, okay. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session with the council only.
So moved.
Okay, so, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it, and so we will convene into executive session, and we will return shortly.